Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has a medium in progress to advertise?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see everyone, good to see those who are in the room and those who are watching us by live stream. Thank you for tuning into our first meeting of the month. We do have two meetings on, uh, first Tuesday, second, third Thursday, so please tune in accordingly. At this time, we will do our tradition of item three, prayer and pledge of allegiance. Pastor Richard Hayes is here to lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Please stand for those two items, please.
Good evening, sir, and all fellow commissioners. Uh, can we go for the Lord with a word of prayer? Father, we thank you for this many blessings that you bestowed upon us, and even on today, we ask that you would just have your way in this. We come together to take care of the business of this community, this county, continue to bless those that are in leadership, that they, you will lead them and guide them and give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding and a heart for your people, and continue to bless this community to grow and expand and have all the resources and the needs met, that your people may be able to flourish in these times that we're in. We give you thanks and honor in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hayes. Thank you for your service in the community, sir. Uh, we, we knew early on that Commissioner, Commissioner Stevens wouldn't be here and found out today that also Commissioner Jones would have to be absent, so ran a little bit short, but we can certainly, uh, work with what we have, take care of the business of the county. So we will flow right on. Minutes for February need to be approved.
Found a few, uh, things that misspelt, but I think Mr. Brown's got them taken care of.
Some people say with the necessary corrections.
Yeah. Wordsmithing would be the problem, and, uh, so I'll make a motion that we approve.
Motion, second, for the necessary corrections.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please. All right. Thank you. Right into departmental reports, Mr. Rickerson.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission.
Hello, sir.
Tonight, we're kind of bringing, coming to a close of a six-month, uh, pretty intensive process to, uh, update our Liberty County Comprehensive Plan, the two, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Uh, just, just kind of give you a recap of where we've been. Uh, back in September, y'all passed a resolution directing us to prepare this amendment to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan, and at that time, you also paused all non-single-family development out on the, in the area east of I-95 pending the completion of this and the road agreement. Uh, you've, uh, you just recently, in the last couple of months, approved the road development, uh, agreement, uh, policy for the roads, and, uh, with this approval tonight, uh, you will have completed that task, and then the development will, process will go back to what it was prior to September resolution. But, uh, anyway, as part of this process, we had a public hearing at the beginning on October the fourth. Uh, we had two town hall meetings out in the, uh, in the, uh, community at the Dorchester School, and then, uh, we also had a public hearing at the Planning Commission in December. Uh, I, I presented a public hearing for you here on January the third, and after, at, at that time, y'all voted to transmit this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, to the CRC and to Georgia DCA for state and regional review. I recently got back, uh, their report, they have completed their review, and they have, uh, they, they received, as part of their review, they did solicit comments, they received fifty-six comments, uh, regarding the amendment. I have presented those to each of y'all as part of this, uh, agenda package. Uh, the only thing that's left to do is to, um, for you to consider the comments that you received and note on the, uh, resolution that's attached in your package. Um, I can, given all the, all the hearings that we've had, I can take you through this again, or if you want to just kind of, uh, if you have any questions about it specifically, I can do that, but, uh, the only thing left to do is to, uh, adopt the amendment.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Rickerson?
I think, um, I've, I've looked at it, Jeff, just me personally, and I see, um, some things that I'm, I'm glad are in there. Uh, I think we have, uh, or your staff has, all of them, and those individuals that's, you know, had their own opinions on things. The, um, this plan that we've got, though, we have concentrated in one particular area, area, Mr. Chairman.
That's right.
And of, of course, we know that's going to be from the midway in that area, and there's other places that we're going to have to do this same thing.
That's right.
We are, or whoever comes behind us, which is, um, you know, on the west end of the county, um, on the, um, Riceburg end of the county, and the same with, you know, on the, uh, Leroy Cofer Highway.
Right.
So I know that if this is adopted tonight, it's going to be a, something put in place, but it's also, the groundwork needs to be laid for our other areas that's out there. I mean, wherever they're at, I know we have, you know, um, in Riceburg, they have their own city government, and, um, Midway's got their own, but when we're outside of Heinzville, you know, that's predominantly the, um, Elum Road area, from there all the way to the county line, we've got a lot of landmass in there that needs to be looked at. So I'd just like to say that, um, I appreciate you spending the time on it, your staff. Uh, I know the commissioners have looked at it, but, you know, this is not going to be just, you know, the stopping point, what I'm saying. I mean, things is going to pop up, pockets all over the place, so this, you know, try to be aggressive and look out there at other areas that need to be, whether it's going to be residential homes, where it could possibly be, um, you know, 196 being four-lane, and what are we going to do there as far as commercial growth on the sides of the road? So, um, I mean, that's basically what I would like to say, um, you know, we, we just, I don't want us to stop. If we're going to try to maintain some sort of, uh, momentum, uh, not, uh, to, um, have, you know, issues down the road, then it's going to, it's going to mean that, that your staff, and along with us, and the rest of the board members, and the other municipalities, is going to have to have buy-in on it, so I appreciate you, your time and your work on it.
Thank you.
It's, it's been a good exercise, learned a lot through, through the process. I'm reminded, though, from what Commissioner Walter said, every ten years, so when, when, when is the?
We are, we are due for a, a full update in, uh, 2026, but, you know, this thing, we have to, we have to cover every square mile of the county, so it takes a couple of years to get through it.
Yeah.
So this is just, this is just a small little portion of the county that we did here. We've got to cover every square mile of the county, so we'll begin later this year, and it'll take us through the middle of 2025, and then we go through the adoption process. So, yeah, this is kind of the beginning of a bigger process that we're starting on.
All right. All right. Then it is a good warm-up, then.
It is, it is. My sta, my staff definitely had a good experience about how, what we're going to be coming into for the next couple of years.
Well, I don't think we need to wait till 2026. I can just, uh, I mean, when the folks at Fort Stewart decide what they're going to do, they do it, and when the builder decides, I'm buying 600 acres out here to put homes on, he's not going to be waiting on us either.
That's right.
He's going to start clearing ground, so, you know, we just need to start, uh, I know Trent is involved in a lot of things that's out there, but we've got drainage issues that's going to continually be there, a few drainage tributaries that's going to need to be addressed, uh, water and sewer coming from the, uh, Macintosh area going to Flemington, and then, of course, going to Riceburg, so, uh, when you've got those facilities out there in place, you're going to encourage more growth.
And, uh, follow up, Billy, I want to appreciate you too, Jeff, and your staff, for your leadership through this process.
Thank you.
And I'm reminded, too, Trent, uh, I know has done a heck of a lot of work, met with citizens privately, uh, Brian Darby has met with citizens privately, so there have been several persons involved in this process, and, uh, and I'm pleased, I'm pleased, um, and I look forward to the future. Now, following what Commissioner Walden says, it has to be completed in 2026?
In 2026, that's right.
So you have to start now, basically.
And as you saw, how much work it went into this, just doing this little piece right here. We've got a big county we've got to cover, so there's a lot of, a lot of vetting that has to go on.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate what you've done, really and truly. I, I, I know you've been beat up because, you know, there's six up here that gets beat up, and then the chairman, every once in a while, he knows how to dodge them, but, but, you know, that's part of it, that's just, um, I took my money and qualified for the job, so I'm all, I don't mind.
All right. Any other questions? Chair and take a motion.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second, sir.
Motion, second, we approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, knowing that the work is just beginning.
That's right.
Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Animals?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So Chairman, once you sign this resolution, we will send that to, back to, um, to CRC and DCA, and then this process will be complete.
Okay.
Okay, our, our next item that we have, uh, this evening is a request by Mr. Charlie Fraser. We had originally had this scheduled for y'all to, to hear on, uh, February the seventh, and we had a request from the family to postpone that for thirty days for them to work out some internal issues, and I think, uh, it's been reported to me that that has happened now.
Let's go into public hearing, please, a motion.
Some, some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor, show your hand. All right. I thought Mr. Fraser, I don't see him, do I?
I don't either, I'm not sure.
He'll be here, okay.
Okay. You want me to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, we, uh, we did postpone this and put out the proper notice to postpone this until tonight's, uh, hearing, so this is, this has been advertised as a public hearing. It's a request by Mr. Charlie Fraser, uh, to rezone six, 1.6 acres of property from AR1 agricultural residential to R3 multifamily residential. He wants to put in some rental apartments on this family-owned property. Uh, property is located at 2916 Highway 196 West, and you can see there the parcel number that's, goes with that. This is a picture of the property, uh, looking back toward, toward Heinzville, a sign on the property, the add in the Coastal Courier there. And this is an aerial view of the property, you can see Airport Road here, Highway 196 going into the curve, going toward, uh, Gum Branch. Uh, you can see it's kind of an odd-shaped triangular piece of property. Uh, this is the entire ten-plus acres of property here. The only thing that's being requested to be rezoned in this area right here, uh, this outlined in blue, that's, that's Mr. Fraser's piece of that overall big family tract. And you can see here, just the zoning map, the property is all currently zoned, AR1, he wants to rezone this blue outlined area here to R3, so he can build three apartment buildings on that. And that's the layout that he's presented with us, uh, for us to, to do that. He's got two attached apartment buildings here, and then one attached apartment building here. This is the area that is outlined over here in the center of the property for his septic tank drain fill. And, of course, all the other property that's, the family property is all still going to be, remain unchanged, and still, he's proposing that to remain AR, AR1 as it's currently zoned.
Jeff, I know, excuse me for cutting you off, I know there's certain pockets of the county that are in the county, in the city, in the county.
Right.
So that's one of those pockets that's in the county.
It's in the unincorporated county.
Yeah.
That's right.
But, but Heinzville, he, he wouldn't have the option of using Heinzville sewage?
I don't think that's.
It's a long, it's a good way down the road.
Don't go that far down.
No? Okay.
So, anyway, our normal zoning analysis, uh, does this property have reasonable economic values as it's currently zoned? Yes. Uh, this proposed use is, uh, is conforms to the J-LUS study, uh, that also conforms to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan that we, that we did back in 2016. Uh, number four, uh, we don't anticipate that this, this use will have a adverse effect on the usability of nearby properties. Number five, uh, the proposed use is suitable in view of nearby properties, just residential. Number six, the, uh, zoning proposal will not create any kind of undue burden on transportation utilities, public safety, uh, or, or, uh, streets and transit. Uh, number seven, uh, we don't think that this will create a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals, and we don't believe that this is going to create a domino effect or splot, or sprawl. Uh, we have not identified any unique historical sites that this will adversely impact. Number ten, uh, this property is not in a flood hazard area, uh, it is not spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development, and we have not identified any unique conditions to support approval or denial. Planning Commission heard this at their December meeting, and, December? No, it was set for February, this is March. They heard it at their, uh, January meeting, and, as I said, it was postponed from last month to today, so, uh, it's, it's here, it's ready for you to consider. Planning Commission recommended approval with standard conditions, and we have advertised this as a public hearing.
All right, so, let's see, we were trying to figure out today, this is the Commissioner Thrift, this is what we think?
It is.
It is. Uh, she's not here. Any questions for Jeff, commissioners, that you may have? Anyone in the audience that, uh, is here?
Hillary. I'll tell you what I know.
All right.
So I have a relationship with Mr. Charlie in high school and being in National Guard, and with Ms. D working with the county all this year, so there's, I'm helping them with this, there's no fee, so there's no financial interest in this for me, but, um, we've kind of figured out that there was a little family issue on, uh, who's getting what and how that works. Uh, we spent the last month meeting with Ms. D, Mr. Alvin, and Mr. Charlie, and we worked out who gets what on the entire tract, um, because there's four siblings, you know, Mr., uh, there was a Mr. Stacy, a Mr. Charlie, Ms. D, and Mr. Alvin, and, um, so everybody's supposed to get about 1.6 acres, more or less. So we sat down over the last month, and we figured out who gets what, and we drew up a plat. Uh, Jeff's looked at it, and, uh, it's clear, the LCPC, um, they are taking that over to Jones, Osteen, and Jones, and get all the deeds worked out for that. Um, I did not call them today to remind them of the meeting tonight, which I probably should have, so I'm not sure why they're not here tonight. My intent was for them to stand up to you two guys today, say, yes, we've got this family issue worked out, move forward, but I, you know, I don't know what to tell you, other than I met with them, and that's where they are, and, you know, the, the direction you guys decided to go today is, is, you know, whatever works best for the county, but I think we do have it all worked out as far as who gets what, and I think everybody's as happy as we're going to get.
Well, our mission is to address the rezoning, not to address any other.
Well, you know, Trent, you, you said you worked all that out without a fee, it's good to know that you, that you work that way, I got some issues, I, that, that, that I need you to, to help me with, but I'll, I'll, I'll call you after this meeting.
Maybe I shouldn't be saying this.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, you didn't teach, you didn't teach me typing in high school, though, you know, my knuckles didn't get beat with that yardstick.
I coached you in, 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 in sports, at the recreation, though.
Oh, there, there you go, there we.
Well, Ms. Thrift is not here, if you.
Sure, we'll take a motion, yeah.
Y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, make a motion that, um, for approval of zoning petition 2023-002 LC with standard conditions.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion, second, we approve the petition as presented, and further discussion. All in favor, show your hands, please. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Joey, make sure you've got that recorded, that Trent, Trent is going to stand good for.
Yes, sir.
Budget amendment, uh, request?
We just need to go back to open session.
Oh, change, uh, motion to go back to open session, thank you.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, second, all in favor? Show your hands. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, now, budget amendment, Chief Hagan, go, go. I'm used to, I'm used to my CFO being here, too, when we do these, you know.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
All that way.
Always an honor to come before you, gentlemen, tonight, with young ladies missing, but we're honored to come before you. Have a quick request that, um, in this current budget cycle, the Sheriff's Department has not been at 100%, and we still aren't, but we're looking to bring on this Natalie Lopez, who does, has been working, as you can see, a lot of her work with Wallthierville Police Department, which I hired her when I was, uh, chief out there, because she's very good at putting together events, and so, um, when the budget ran out out there and they couldn't keep her, we wanted to bring her over to the Sheriff's Department, because there was a lot to be done in the neighborhoods like Gum Branch, um, Riceburg, Midway, a lot of the things that I noticed we were doing from the Sheriff's Department's perspective was around the Heinzville area, and we really need to get out into those outer areas, and she's real good at planning those type events. And so for what we wanted to do was move $11,177.60 to increase the contract labor, she would be working as a contract laborer, not take up a position that's within the Sheriff's Department, and, um, we won't have to pay, of course, benefits with her working as a W-9 employee, and she does have her own business, and we would like to move that money from the, um, of course, the contract labor line, and move it to, to the, um, where we're using it as a, um, a contracted position, and, um, so I would ask that we be allowed to do so for the. And so, I would ask that we be allowed to do so for the rest of this, that those funds would carry out the rest of this budget year. Then we will look at maybe requesting a funds for that position later, if, if, in hopes of keeping that position going.
All right, any questions for Chief, so you?
Well, just one question, Chief, I'm, I'm reading this and you just explained it, but is this, is it a wash? Or is it higher than one? I mean, is, is it a wash?
It is.
Move it from here over there, I mean, there's no additional cost?
No, sir.
It's a wash?
It's a wash, it is.
You just move in funds.
Just.
And I know we have to come before you gentlemen, other board here, to request any move of personnel funds to any other line item, so.
Chief, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I guess, I'm just, again, just trying to get some clarity, there's a paper doll over here and four quarters over there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's even wash.
I just would, if I were standing where you're standing, I would just suggest that you all consider, rather than saying we're gonna add additional, maybe find savings in your budget for next year to cover the same cost.
Exactly, exactly. Words matter, doesn't it? But yes, and that's what, we're in hopes of a finding, those proper funding for it. But as that, if we can afford it, we understood that, that's there, but thanks for that advice as well.
Yeah, we're about less than two months away from going through the budget process anyhow.
And I've seen her work in Waltherville, she does great work, and.
Matter of fact, we have an event coming up that we have partnered with Cent here recently, that the autism event, which will be weekend of April first, so she does some great work.
And I do believe in community policing, but I'm gonna check, I got some friends back there on the back wall, and you said, like, Midway, Riceburg. So, if you can push anything further to the coast every now and then.
Well, if you look at my career, that's one thing I've been big on, is community policing, and that's what we started out in Waltherville. I wanna move it, because I look and never see anything out in the Gum Branch area, and then most of the Riceburg stuff and Midway or Self. And I think to be part of it, we need someone to really push that and make, let the county know that we, as the Sheriff's Department, serve the complete county.
Our county, yeah, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to appreciate you coming up, Chief. I'm sorry you haven't went and bought my dinner yet, but that's all right. I, I know everybody in here is, is interested in making sure we have a safe community. And, you know, the budget amendment, of course, from what I can understand, you, you know, the sheriff has that obligation. He can move his money wherever he wants to, but it, it is important to me and some of the folks that I represent that when it's budget time, we, you know, we address these things, so.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's try to do whatever you can to, you know, if we can wait, just wait. If we can't, you know, if this was something that we got to do today, the ox is in the ditch, then let's do it. But if we could wait till we can get this budget squared away, I mean, we just got our number for sales tax, and I know there's gonna be other things to, to look for, but just because we got a little bit extra, let's try to, let's try to save all we can. Community policing is, is very important from the ground up. I mean, you don't have to be a thirteen-year-old, you can be, you know, a seventy-year-old, like the sheriff.
Absolutely.
Oh, I meant, Mr. Steve.
Go ahead, go ahead. Let your mouth.
But sincerely, I mean, you know, let's, let's try to, let's work every way possible to try to hold these things till we can put it in the budget. That's just my feelings on it, I'm not gonna dwell on it much more than that.
Respectful of that, and like I say, me coming in mid-year into this organization, I'm learning as we go. I stay in touch with Mr. Brown, trying to make sure we do the things the right way. And in this situation, I think the opportunity present itself before someone else grab them and off and run. And it fills a void of somebody we truly need to keep, because they're already working within the county. So to keep them going and keep those events like the autism event, which would have been canceled had we not gotten involved with them, so. But I truly respect what you're saying as it relates to that, but budgetary-wise, we will make sure we're on top of those type things at that time. Thank you, sir.
Chair, take a motion. Budget amendment, he's just transferring it from one item line to another.
Mr. Chairman, I make it, motion that we approve the budget amendment as presented by Chief Hagan.
Yes, sir, second. Heard the second, okay, motion, second, and further discussion. All in favor, brush your hands, please, all right.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you all.
Resolution, sale of real property?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. This is the, the next step that's required to move towards a transfer of property or indicate the willingness to transfer property for an appraised value to the Georgia Forestry Commission. So before you have the resolution that they require that you adopt to indicate that, so they can talk to state properties about going ahead and doing their necessary part of the project. And then on the back, you've got that survey that we looked at last time, that shows the proposed five-acre tract that's been surveyed and sent to them borders up next to the Career Academy property on that, on that right side. So, should be on the back of that, yeah, it should be on the back of that resolution.
Don't worry, I got it.
You get it? It should be on the back of that resolution right there. This is the next step, of course, the other thing that will happen is, is, once you approve this, their engineer will go out there, take a look, contractor. It'll go to state properties, they'll, they'll do two appraisals on the property, they'll come back and then negotiate with the board on, on what that amount will be for the transfer of the property. So this is not a final thing, you'd have to obviously come back after that, after an agreement is hopefully reached, and then authorize the sale of the property. Only indicating your willingness to move forward with the process.
I think we've had a previous discussion on that, gentlemen?
We have. Are you entertaining a motion?
I am.
All right, Mr. Chair, wanna make a motion on the resolution for the sale of real property?
Second, second. That we approve the resolution to start the process, and we'll follow it through, further discussion for Mr. Brown. All in favor, brush your hands, please. All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Motor grader bid.
Joey, on this, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, have you, you've got this interest on Lee Place?
It is coming off of Lee Place.
Is there any way to, will it be to where you can go out on? The other route?
No, sir, it'll, it'll, it'll all come out on, on Lee Place. And of course, they'll, you know, as you know, they'll, they like that idea of being able to go Lee Place all the way in Long County area or coming on out to what will be a signalized intersection at Airport Road there, so.
Yeah, signals coming there sometime.
Well, there was some construction gonna be going on in behind the old ACS Industries, which is a subdivision, and that's probably gonna require a lot out on.
Eighty-four?
Maybe. I mean, I was just thinking about when you, if forestry had to go across eighty-four and across the bypass, go that way, but. I mean, if they've looked at it, you've looked at it. That's all I had, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mosley, you got a handout?
No, he. You don't see it?
I guess he put it up on the screen.
They have a slide? No, no slide for that.
No, sir. No slide, no slide. No slide.
I got it.
You got it, yeah, that's what I say, it's not very favorable.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, on, in late January, we put out a bid to acquire a motor grader, and we only received one RFP. And we opened RFP, looked at the numbers, and they were very high. And Mr. Wells and I, we talked about it, and we talked to Mr. Brown about requesting the board to reject the bid. In the meantime, Mr. Wells and Mr. Brown have talked about another means to acquire the equipment that they need. So, at this time, we'd like to recommend to the board to reject the bid.
So moved, oh, I'm sorry. So you have a plan B?
Yes, sir, there's a plan B.
Yes, sir, now, just very quickly, the plan B, basically, these motor graders were bought, you may remember, some of you may remember the lease-purchase type bids that were put in, or actually, they weren't lease-purchase, they were actually leased and you would turn them back in, you'd give them credit for them and all that. Well, those have kind of gone away, and so, what Mr. Wells and I talked about today was, was with the life still left on these graders, he prefers to go ahead and just buy them now that the lease is over. So we're gonna gather up those prices to bring back to you to look at going ahead and buying that grader.
Maintenance, I have the maintenance on those now.
He says it's real good. I mean, they've been maintained, you know, by the supplier while they're under lease. He seems real happy, and I asked him about the number of hours on them, and he said, oh, yeah, they're good. So he, he thinks we defer, buying a brand-new one and just pay out this lease, what's left, but I'll get those numbers for you.
And a possibility of us saving some money?
Absolutely.
I guess in the meantime, we just need to get aggressive with the resurfacing, with the, with the paving roads.
Paving roads, and we gotta cut down on the graders.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, that is an understatement, because I have two projects in the new area that I have.
Welcome to the club.
And I, I can't get the municipality there to agree, hey, let's, let's pave them.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna go in there and say pave a road that they don't want, but I, I mean, you drive a grader from that shop all the way down eighty-four to grade a road, when you could have the road paved and just keep moving them further on down? I mean, it's not a hard thing to do, just, you know, the sales tax money, that's what it was for, to pave them, but I'm not gonna go out there and try to pave something that they don't want.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, I'm noticing some counties on their motor graders, certain areas of their way out, instead of driving the motor graders in every day and back out every morning, they'll find a secure area. But the only thing else that leaves is that they got to have transportation to get there. So I don't know which is more expensive, additional transportation or putting the, putting the miles and the wear and tear on that motor grader to drive it from the shop all the way to Sunberry, every, you know, two and three times a week.
We can sure check, be glad to get Mr. Wells and talk about some options to do that.
Yes. Topping them off would be, probably be more economical, you know, as opposed to driving the motor, it's faster and less wear and tear.
I mean, the only time we have to worry about is when it comes time for, well, we do have a fuel truck.
Well, the maintenance, and maintenance, you just have to bring them in for maintenance.
Right, okay.
There's some maintenance on some.
Let's take a look at that.
Okay.
Just to piggyback on that, that's exactly what they do in, in Long County. They'll grade the roads, and then they'll park them, and then, you know, somewhere by a church where they know there would be any problems with them, and then they pick them up in a truck, a pickup, and then carry them back, and the next morning, they drive it, they drive it out there with a third person, and he carries the truck back. But, I mean, when you start crossing ninety-five, how many roads you gonna have there to scrape? Do they send two down there or one?
One.
So.
The only time two go is if they pull in the ditches.
Yeah. Well, again, pave them.
All right, motion to reject this.
Frazier. I, I wanted to say something, but we, we, you know, we, I'm looking at the time, and this is probably a record, and I want us to win that record. And I don't really wanna get in the weeds about dirt roads.
All right.
But I did have a suggestion, but I'm trying to get out of here on time, and we're, and we're doing good, y'all, keep up the good work.
All in favor? I'm gonna get you all. You straight report.
Okay.
You gonna go first?
I'm gonna kick it off, Mr. Chair. The first thing we wanna talk about, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we wanna talk about our youth programs, our summer food program, and we'll close that with our ARPA reports in this particular update. Okay. Our youth programs, we've revised our current application, updated it and placed it online and sent it out to the school systems. They're due on April the seventh, and interviews will be held on Saturday, April twenty-second, which is unfortunately the day timeframe of ACCG. And we'll be here from eight-thirty to twelve PM, and we will have orientation on May the twenty-second, and we'll start our first day of class beginning on June the first, and that's for our summer youth employment program. Youth Commission, we'll be celebrating National Women's History Month. We're asking several of our female department heads to come by and have the youth to interact with them and learn about their particular positions and learn some of the challenges that they've had in terms of being a department head. And we also work with Mr. Frazier, Commissioner Frazier, trying to review some ways that we can receive and recruit new youth, because our old crew that, that was the original crew, they, they're gone, and we need a new crew, new crew. Summer food program, spoke to Mr. Floyd today, he's scheduled to go to training on March the twenty-second and the twenty-third. When he come back, we will debrief him, and we will have him to come before this body to present his findings and whether or not you guys wanna proceed forward. On our ARPA updates, you all had two grant programs last year. The first one was the nonprofit business grants. We sent letters to all of those recipients, asking them to provide their expenditures so we can close it out, make sure we have the records for ARPA, and that we be accountable to, accountable in terms of receiving those funds. And we also, we worked with United Way last year to promote that particular project, and we just recently received the invoice to pay them for the funds that, that they, we had in our contractual agreement. On our educational assistance grant, which y'all approved in July and awarded in August, we had five recipients. Part of the requirement was they had to do a pre-assessment survey, they, they've completed that, all five of them, they did it mid-year. We're waiting on one to submit those results, and one has requested the final allotment. We did divide the allotment into two, two allotments. One, one nonprofit has received their allotment, and two are in the process of receiving, and the other two, we will work with them to get their final allotment. So that concludes my report, sir.
Before you leave, do we have any more funds for, for ARPA, for, for like education? Right, I was gonna say, I, I remember, I think we kept some to the side, right, as for, for future.
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, Heather is gonna give you an ARPA update during your next meeting. I'll should give you the updated spreadsheet that'll show everything by category that you've got, so that y'all can talk about that at your planning session on thirty-first and decide what you wanna try to do with some of those funds that have not been dispersed yet, that are designated for those programs.
Thank you, sir.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the nonprofits, the requesting this expenditure information, if for some reason they don't comply, what, is there some kind of repercussions for that?
That's a good question, sir. We're trying to get them to make sure they supply all the data that we can.
Well, I mean, you know, they, they joyfully got in line to get it, I feel like they should, this is equally report as they should.
Yes, sir.
And if, you know, they don't, you know, we, I'll, I'll like to know if they don't, okay?
I can report back to the body.
I think we knew that reporting may be a challenge for.
Well, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but it's. Well, it's a challenge, but it's, you know, they got in line to get.
They did.
And that would explain clearly to them.
Yes, sir, that was articulated to them.
Reporting is, reporting is part of getting it.
They're fully aware.
With ARPA funds?
With any money.
Yeah, I know, the.
Yeah, yeah, but in this case, yeah, the ARPA money.
I have seen.
It was people in here getting it that I didn't even know did that kind of stuff.
Well, I mean, that's something that was, applications had to go to you, Joey, is that correct?
But it still boils down on our shoulders, doesn't it, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Right? Those applications would went in there, and if it's not, I mean, federal government will look in there and see what's right and what's wrong. And if it's not right, they win the prize. I mean, that's the end of the, end of the road. I mean, that's theft by conversion or whatever you want to call it. But, I mean, I understand what it was supposed to be used for.
Right.
Much as anybody, but, you know, you see in the newspaper all the time, and the news where so-and-so spent ARPA money and wasn't what it was designed for, or not what they said it was for, so.
I just know we gave it to them in good faith, and if reporting was part of that, then reporting should be.
They should report back to us.
Was there a report to come to us, Joey, or?
Yes, sir, back to you.
Yeah.
Back to internally.
And, you know, my question was, you know, what happened if they failed to report? I mean, that, they shouldn't fail to report.
Right.
No, it's been over a year, hasn't it?
And we've.
No.
It's been, it's, June would be a year.
I just know.
And we've had, and we've had some that already reached out and provided that information, saying, sir, this is how we spent the money, and here's what we have.
Yeah, and that's the way it should be. I mean, you give them a thousand, they should have receipts for a thousand or nine-hundred-and-fifty with the, for the balance. I mean, it's simple math.
All right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to roll two, and I made a copy of y'all so that you'd have a takeaway on this. I wanted to just quickly touch on the legislation. Some of y'all are tracking this. ACCG does a great job on their website of posting updates at their site. So, if you ever want to go check the status of a legislative bill, you can key the number in, you can see what bills they're watching and what they're tracking. Just a few of those to point out, I, first thing to point out is crossover day was yesterday. So, any bill that did not get introduced and passed in one of the houses, Senator House, will not be able to be transferred over to the other for consideration. As you know, what can happen, though, is that they could still take pieces of a bill that didn't get introduced and tack it on to a bill that did. So, a lot of that's in the committee work that goes on. But a few of those, one is that would increase the truck weight limits. This has passed out of rules now, is expected to be passed by the House. This would increase the weight limits of trucks to be able to go over bridges. And if you want to take a look at that, it's really a suppos'd by ACCG, it's suppos'd by GDOT, mainly because of the number of the costs that would be involved in trying to upgrade bridges around the state. If you go to ACCG's website, I tried to get it to overload here, and it wouldn't, or download, you can see a map of the affected areas, and it's all over the state. So, don't know, don't know whether there'll be some compromise reached there, whether it's a House bill, so I don't know whether the Senate's going to pass it. We'll keep tracking that for you. Fees on assessment notices, this is an old one that came up. As you know, we do our solid waste fees on our tax assessments, which saves us having to have a separate billing system, separate collection system, separate everything with somebody to have to do that. It is that way around the state. A lot of folks do that, as you know. They'll put recreation fees, fire fees, anything on there. This is the third year in a row that we've seen a move to try to eliminate that and try to say there can't be anything on assessment notices or tax bills except tax-related matters. So, I did send back a note yesterday, it was heard by the Rules Committee yesterday. I'm not sure how the Rules Committee voted, to try to get that out to the session last night, but it was still alive as of yesterday. So, I sent opposition to that, ACCG opposes that. We have two representatives from our area, close area, that are on that Rules Committee, so I'll let them know about that. The other one that's passed the House is a poll works bidding law that just increases the level of the project before you have to put it out to bid. That has, that criteria has not been adjusted probably in about twenty years. And so, that would slightly bump it up, I believe, from a hundred thousand to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar project that would be mandatorily have to put out for bid. The mental health, there are probably, when I look through all the bills that had been introduced or were suggested, there were probably a total of about ten mental health-related bills. Just, there is a main one that we're tracking that overhauls mental health around the state, significant bill. It has passed the House, and it's over in the Senate. So, do expect something to come out on mental health reform again this year. The Raise the Age Act is actually a juvenile court act that would allow felony-type serious crimes to be tried, juveniles to be tried as an adult. So, we're tracking that also to see how that may affect things. The committee reported it favorably to come out. And then, reimbursement of Attorney General expenses really relates to cases that fail to be tried by local district attorneys around the state that if petitioned, the Attorney General's Office can look at those on serious matters and choose to prosecute them themselves in the districts. It seems to still be alive. We kind of surprised, it's about a fifty-fifty split for district attorneys around the state, some that support, some that do not support that bill. There is a lot of question from ACCG on expenses. If an AG decided to pick it up and try it, the expenses would still be borne by the county of the circuit that they chose to try it in. So, there's been a lot of concern mainly from ACCG about expenses on that bill. Again, there are many, many, many others. These are some that were highlighted. We have a legislative update every Friday morning that I tune into, so these are the ones that we're tracking very closely. But go to that ACCG website, take a look, and you can see every bill that they're tracking and their, and how they support or not support it. I did want to give you a quick update on the airport. We had a meeting out there last month, and I'll fly through these pretty quick, no pun intended. Is that just, things are on the increase, all for the good. This is a little snapshot based on the number of aircraft we had in twenty-twenty. You can see that that is almost doubled now. There's forty-eight based out there. We did complete the new hangar build, and it's all filled up. Fuel sales concurrently have gone from twenty-twenty, about a hundred-and-eighty thousand all the way up to four-hundred-and-six thousand dollars for fuel sales, which is great. So, it's a, it's an economic divider for us that's really working well. This is just a shot of the T-hangers that were complete. Again, they're all full, they were full before they were ever constructed. And we have a T-hanger waiting list, again, that if we had the funds or could get funds from GDOT to do another hangar, they would be full too. We did have to add some tie-downs out there to tie additional aircraft down because of the number now that are out there. And we've done a couple of other upgrades out there. One is the pavement ceiling, you see on the right, and the other is to do some canopy cover for the fueling depot that's out front. A lot of folks choose to fuel on their own at the self-service. The other thing we are going to be doing, I actually got done yesterday, is a restriping of the GA area internal here, and we did that in-house. Mr. Heath was able to do that within-house resources. Savannah Aviation is a flight school out of Savannah that had the local group has approved to come in and start working at the facility. You see the number of aircraft, number of current students they've got, and they do offer some charter service coming out of there. So, I think we're pretty excited to have them now come into that facility. This is just a shot, again, of the Capitol project we're working on that would take a new entrance road off of what is Stacy's store road and bring it around and bring it into the back part of the airport so that you wouldn't enter through the garrison area anymore. This is part of the original agreement with Fort Stewart some twenty years ago that we'd try to create our own entrance and exit from that facility separated. And that's what we're working on right now. The environmental impact money for the studies was approved last year in the state budget. Those are complete, and we're working on the final document now to submit to Army Command for review. Once that comes down, then we'll be able to pursue buying the permits to be able to go ahead. And what that is, is an expansion. This is the thirty-three acres that's leased in here right now. This would be an expanded lease area that would come on out and take in this. And it follows the need of contracting folks that have come to Development Authority into the county about trying to establish some aftermarket aircraft retrofit activities. And we didn't have any space to try to haul for that. So, that will shape us up for that and give us some expansion. The road won't be in a leased area, it'll be just an access easement that's granted by the federal.
Joey, where's the old Sunberry Road on, is it on this picture here?
It's not, it's, you come down Hero Road, and it would be running along here.
Okay. And that is the airport, that's it, right there?
Airport terminal would be right here.
Right in there?
That's not right. Airport terminal would be right here.
And you said it's the road of coming in behind, I know Stacy's closed down, the store, they closed. And so, the new road is going to go down Sunberry or go down the road beside Stacy's?
Go down the road beside Stacy's. Well, it'll come off of that road beside Stacy's, come up in, and actually come in here. Stacy's is really running down here.
Okay.
I did want to give you a quick update on your construction projects. This is EMS building, it was last week. They've completed almost all the block work on the building. You can see that they're starting to install sheet rock on the inside. This week, they're putting down some final aggregate base to go ahead and start the paving in the parking lot. GDOT approved the ingress and ingress lane out on seventeen. So, that work should be, weather holding up, should be done within the next couple of weeks, which will be great. The Miller Park Station continues to come along also. They've about finished with the block work on that station, which is good. Roofing panels are being installed now, or being installed actually last week. They'll probably be complete by this week, as a matter of fact, again, weather, weather withstanding. And what you're looking at here is just inside one of the bays on the left-hand side. Open bay here, or is this bay area in here? So, the project's moving along. EMS and Miller, probably both right now, actually EMS will probably be a little ahead because of supplies that they're already on hand. But EMS probably looking at a May-type substantial completion. Fire station, probably more like July or August at this point to do that. They'll start on the interior work, and it'll slow down a little bit. This is Sam Harris' gym. I got a couple of slides here for y'all to look at on that because it's a pretty exciting project. This is last week during the progress construction meeting. You can notice how they've done the blackout already behind the stage. Of course, you'll have a curtain that'll be up front, but the blackout is provided for plays and things like that that could occur at the facility. The other thing you notice that they started actually doing some striping around the wall. I'm going to show you a slide in a minute on there. But that continues to move. HVAC equipment due to be in here pretty soon. They've already done a lot of work on that, on the sections related to the office and everything for that. And pretty much everything is going along real well. They've completed the bathroom work as far as sheet rock and things that have to be done in there and all the concrete work, so that project's going. We actually walked the trail the other day, we had to modify that a little bit, but we walked that trail because of some impediments that were in the way and had to realign that just a little bit, but that's going to be nice. This is, gives you a look at what that stage wall will look like with the striping around it, with the accents on the goalpost. Again, we were trying to go back to some of the original Liberty High colors in there. I know we talked about that a little bit. So, you actually see the purple stripes that'll be here with the gold accents. And I don't have a picture of the actual floor that is there, but the floor will also reflect some of those colors, which will be great. This is, again, just along the bleacher wall. These two, the bleachers are actually going to be this color to match the stripes. They won't be exactly like that, they'll be spread out. You'll have the two goalposts on the sides, or four goals on the side, so you can play sidecourt ball also on there. This is just a little look at what the entrance way is going to look like. They have finished doing the concrete work on that. They should start standing up those walls pretty soon. But you'll have a reception window that'll be on the left, which is where the old ticket counter was. The ticket counter that was on this side, for those of you that remember, Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Lovett. Well, we had to take that in to do storage and supplies, so that'll be a supply area. But you kind of see, it'll be a white brick that'll come in here. This is really not totally reflective of that, of the Liberty High purple, but it'll be Liberty High purple up here with accent, so you can see how she has blended all that together.
Yeah, I never went through it, I always snuck in.
Just a, just a quick thing here, these are all the Capitol projects we're tracking. I don't have all the road projects on here, some of them are, but there are a lot of them that are either in preliminary design or under construction or in the planning stages. Just a few I wanted to point out, Island's Highway improvements, Trent's finishing up that work related to the planning activity on that. We'll be coming to you, he'll be on your agenda to talk to you during your planning session to see whether you want to go ahead and greenlight that construction drawing on that project for Island's Highway and the environmental. So, at best, if you greenlighted it this year, it would be about eighteen months for it to be ready for construction anyway. So, pretty long lead time. The other, just to let you know, that we'll be bringing to you next time, Mr. Mosley will, is the Guild Park Phase Two. It's out for bids right now. The water system for Lewis Frazier, we had a pre-construction conference for that today, a pre-construction, pre-bid meeting for that today. That'll come to you next time also. So, there's several things in the hopper, several planned, and we're just tracking all those for you. I do want to talk to you about the budget a little bit. It is that time again. Samantha will put together a budget calendar for you. This is, a lot of this is embedded in that calendar already. The budgets to the departments will be going out next week. As a matter of fact, on March sixteenth, they'll be due back April sixth. We'll be getting those ready within about a week from that time and getting those for your availability. We'll probably have those delivered to you this year so that you can have them. Budget presentations are set for April nineteenth and the twentieth. And then, the budget work by commission and committees will take place from April twenty-fifth to May seventeenth, and we'll be looking at some specific dates to try to meet that. As you're aware, we have to kind of build from the bottom up. So, our last date to adopt a budget would be June fifteenth, which is your mid-month meeting. There are so many days that you have to track ahead of that before you can have the public hearings. So, how much notice you have to give? So, your public hearing would take place on June sixth, which is your regular meeting. So, everything kind of gets compressed from the bottom up. It has to go out for display a couple of weeks before that, or a week before that. So, that's the reason you see the May twenty-fourth public display. But I wanted to go ahead and give you this, give it to you in your handout. Again, Ms. Richardson will be addressing that with you during your planning session, and I'll let you go ahead and peg some of those dates for your calendar. Last thing I wanted to do, and this was a little bit of an afterthought or an afterremembrance, was I put this in separate. I think at the last meeting or meeting before, we had talked about the bypass project. And so, what you see is an alignment of that bypass project. Clint, keep that up real quick. And I won't spend a lot of time on it. This is Highway eighty-four. This is Highway eighty-four, Liberty County line is running in here. Everything is parceled, is in Liberty County, everything below is in Long. So, Old Reynolds Concrete Plant, as I know it, you're just inside the Liberty County line. There's a takeoff right there, and you can see the route as it comes around and ties back into E.B. Cooper beyond the subdivision that was done down here. Actually, this comes in right here, it will not connect into that road. It'll be a cul-de-sac that's actually in that road section. But this is the alignment. I know y'all want to see that, but that is the construction alignment. And again, property is, property acquisition by GDOT's over ninety percent complete now.
Looking at this, if you come off of one-ninety, is that one-ninety-six back over here?
No, sir, actually, that's, this is CSX Railroad, and there'll be a bridge over there.
Come back over to the other, to your right, right? What subdivision is that?
That's the subdivision that Mr. Dryden built, the big subdivision out there.
Well, some bacon, and I keep forgetting the name of it.
Yes, for bacon. And Ridge.
Hampton Ridge. What I like to see, Mr. Brown, is the whole layout of it coming from one-ninety-six to next time when you want to bypass.
Well, it won't come from one-ninety-six, so.
You mean coming from?
There's nothing coming from one-ninety-six, it's just from eighty-four back into one-nineteen.
One-nineteen.
This is E.B. Cooper, this running on down to Riceboro. It ties back in here. You know, there was a, there was a thought, and in fact, in your T-Splash, you put a little bit of money to think about.
Phase two?
A phase two, so to speak, that would come. A phase two, so to speak, that would come, that's what I think you're telling me. Will you come down here and then come across to one ninety-six?
Through the home town.
Yes, sir, that was, that was an old concept, that's not part of this project.
Joey, if we finish with that, could you go back to that list of projects?
Clint, can you, I'm sorry, can you take me back there?
You know, 'cause I, that's an impressive list, you know, and it's more than proof that we spend a lot of money throughout the county. It's not just up here like some people may think. If you just, you just look at those, you know, all the fire stations and all the Eastern Complex and the gym and everything else that we got going on, you know, on the other side of the railroad track. I mean, that's a pretty impressive list.
It is county-wide.
Yeah, I mean, we're county commissioners and, you know, we taking care of the county. It's not just that we just up here, just up here hammering nails in Heinzville. People still think that. I got into a, not a, kind of a discussion with a lady that said that, you know, about roads and come to find out the city she live in doesn't even have dirt roads. Don't know where that came from. But, I mean, they don't even have dirt roads in that city. And she was complaining about dirt roads, maybe she got cousins that live somewhere else. But in her city, there are no dirt roads, none. But you look at these projects and there's some big-ticket items on there.
I can ruin that.
I mean, you know, we can advertise that a little better, I think, because the money is spread out and we getting a lot of stuff done.
And a hundred percent of it is touching splash.
Yeah.
So, none of them at this point directly affecting general fund. I mean, you're doing some bonds and introduce some stuff on some of the projects for there to be repaid by splash as long as splash continues. That's the other good thing.
I mean, you know, we're talking about the Lewis Frazier, the water expansion. We going out toward Gun Branch, we going out, you know, I mean, just all over the county. So, Island's Highway.
As you look at your planning sheet, you'll see, and by the way, we were wrapping up that agenda. We hope to get that out to you probably by next week. We went through some looks on it this morning. But one of those things you'll see is your Splash Seven projects that will start to come into play too. Some of these are in there, but there'll be some things, especially in the recreation sector, like Pavilion at Miller Park, there's another one I had in my mind, Suzie, King Taylor Park, which that's an ARPA-funded, we gotta get that on out of the chute. Those aren't even on here yet.
Right.
But they are going to happen and, again, they're funded by another source other than general fund, so it's good.
Well, and another point that we tried to talk about earlier, there's not a thing on there that requires a motor grader. Everything there is, I mean, that's just another expense, so.
Yep, it's all good stuff.
But, you know, you can continue to do those things and maybe it'll add, you know, the residential homes in those areas, which of course, you know, you have people that'll move and be in an area which will generate more for their, you know, their, the middle, the midway taxes and the Riceboro taxes or whatever. So, I mean, we know now sales tax is generated, more of it is generated in Heinzville than it is anywhere, so.
Service, as you look at that whole thing, is service demand services, is service demand projects. It's growth and service demand. None of them are frivolous projects, none of them are anything that is not caused by the need to expand those services for the citizens, for trafficability, safety or recreation and sports and type of things like that, so. Proud of that.
Good job.
That's an impressive list.
I still enjoy the other day, I can barely go into the community without sitting, in fact, I saw Mr. Wammenmay, many of us know, the other day, and he said, "What you gonna do about this traffic?" "What you do about this traffic?" So, we're proud to have the growth, but it certainly have to match.
I know that, and we don't need to talk about it now, but I know in Wayne County, they got the three oh one bypass going into Jessup. And then, there's another bypass, I think it's one sixty-nine. You know, if we had something like that, you know, kind of overpass or bypass or something, you know, some kind of way, if we could configure something like that for Heinzville. You know, everybody go through Heinzville on eighty-four, but they don't have to stop in Heinzville if we had some other, some other way to get them, to get them out of here, you know, without... I mean, I don't know what they're doing in Jessup, and I was up on three oh one today, I was the only one up there. But they got that, you know, and then one sixty-nine going out toward Reesville, I think it is. Ain't nobody out there either, but they got that. And then, they got a regional DOT office too.
That's why they got that.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I mean, going to Douglas, they paved two oh three all the way to the Wayne County Line and stopped.
Yeah.
It's still a state highway, but they stopped right there. I mean, maybe we need us a DOT office.
I hope they heard that.
We're gonna be there, we're gonna be there. Follow-up on Commissioner Stevens, that Phase B is important, that's why we put some money in Splash Seven to at least get that jump started. So, these things take so long, so if you don't get it started, you'll never get there. So, we're gonna work on, in fact, since we met last, we met at Senator Ossoff's office. Yes, sir. You wanna go?
I can, just real quick, not to hold you up, but so, there's a couple of things that have happened on the transportation sector since we met last, because it's a fast-moving deal. But we did meet with Senator Ossoff, we talked to him about all these projects that are road-related. We also talked about bridge improvement project down at highway, down at Exit seventy-six. And that will take some time to get out of the chute. The other thing that I'm submitting, submitted to of, and I'll get the other one in the hopper next week, are direct appropriation requests to the congressional team to help fund some of the bypass utility relocations that have to be done that falls on the local sector to do, Swatville. And so, we'll be requesting a little over three million dollars to help with the utility relocation. The bypass project right now is scheduled to let for construction in July of this year. So, we need to have all those things certified and so, just a little update on that.
So, we're working behind the scenes, I promise you, we're working. Thank you, sir. Anything else for the good order?
So, sir, make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor.